All right, hey, everybody. We have Kate, Ron, Jill, Megan, G. We're waiting for Chapin, and I have not heard from Shayla for the past couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I think she works in health, right?
Yeah, she's with the state, so.
So I'm sure her attention is in other places.
I would think so.
What's your backdrop, Matt?
It's a historic picture of Taft Corners.
I love it.
About 1950-ish. So it's, the mobile station is the historic building in the background, which is still there. But the rest of it's pretty sleepy.
Guess I can pull up the minutes from March 3rd, which is the last time we met.
I just had one correction on the minutes, which is that the WING program was in around 2008 and '09, so definitely not 20 years ago.
Okay, any others?
Wait a second, you have to go right into the years, I'll go there.
Now it's 2000 years ago.
I see, yeah.
In the third paragraph, I've got to edit, perhaps. Okay, never mind, no, I don't have that one, I have another one later on. We go down to the paragraph that starts with Emily on page two. So, on the third line down at the end, it says, "with the food forest management," I wasn't sure what that meant. Food forest management plan.
Sure, we could put "food forest" in quotes if you want, so a food forest is like an intentionally planted grove of trees that provide food, so we might call it an apple orchard in a lot of Vermont, but it could be a lot of other things, and there are some cities, big cities, that are starting to do this. You know, putting food-bearing, nut-bearing, or fruit-bearing trees into their street tree areas or into their parks to make them productive for food.
Okay, that sounds good. The next paragraph at the end, the last sentence, it says, "Wilson has the second lowest municipal tax rate in the county." And then it says comma, which I don't know if it's a period, I'm not sure. "Wilson has been in flux about how to do that, and I'm not sure what that's about."
Emily, does that read, is that kind of a statement more about how to handle public and private spaces? Or is it more about how to continue to have a low tax rate? Or is it just that Wilson continues to work to balance those two interests?
Um, I think it's a little bit of, I'm all through, maybe more so that the town has been in flux about how to have a low tax rate and balancing public versus private spaces. I could just cut it entirely, I think it's kind of confusing.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And then, right at the first part of the next paragraph there, it says, "Ruben Escopizo expressed concern about school class size." I think he was more concerned, I think he said that, but I think he was more concerned with school capacity. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that or not. Because then further down, we start talking about, or Matt starts talking about school capacity as opposed to class size.
Yeah, that sounds right to me, it sounded like he was using that as his example to raise that concern about capacity.
Yeah.
That's all I had. So, want me to make a motion here? Everybody's all set? So I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of March 3rd as amended.
I'll second.
Megan, seconds.
And who's in charge of this meeting?
Chapin should be here.
Catherine's got her hand up. Kate's got her hand up.
I apologize for being late, I did want to say in the minutes, you may have just covered it, but there was, the second motion towards the end was for the energy plan rather than for what it said, I believe. Is that what you were just covering?
No.
Oh yeah, where's "energy plan"? I see what you're saying, Chapin, the second motion should say "energy plan" instead of...
Yeah, they're identical, it was a copy paste, it didn't get changed.
All right, Chapin, I suggest for the vote on minutes, we should do a roll call.
Yes. And I apologize for being late, and I haven't set my thing up so that I can see everybody, which I was going to go in order that they appear here, gallery view. Okay, so, G.
Hi.
Megan.
Hi. Sorry, I had to get my stuff back and head on you.
Ron just disappeared on my screen. Are you there, Ron? There you are.
I wasn't there at the meeting, so I'll vote yes, but I wasn't there, I don't know if I can vote.
That's good.
It's okay.
Okay, any, is, I don't see Kate or Jill.
I think what I can do is if I stop share, you should see everybody's faces now.
Yes. Jill?
Yes.
Okay, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's unanimous, passing the minutes as amended.
All right.
COVID-19 updates?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Emily, go ahead.
A little housekeeping in terms of the screen capability, I think you should be able in the top right to switch between speaker view and gallery view. I think we're also getting a little feedback, G, from your computer.
Okay.
You might try turning your speakers volume down a little bit. Or just keep yourself muted when you're not talking.
Okay, I'll mute.
All right, so I'll go back to the agenda page. COVID updates, so open meeting law has been changed.
So, we... Terry's on, and I didn't know if there was any, we didn't go over public comments.
Oh yeah.
Yes. Terry, did you want to say anything?
I unmuted Terry. I don't think so.
So, no, I'm just, I'm just sitting in and watching and listening.
Okay, good to have you.
Yeah, thank you, yes, thank you.
Sounds good. Yeah, so the COVID updates, open meeting law, we are no longer required to have the physical meeting room space for the foreseeable future. We've always, through statute, have had the option to meet remotely or have members of boards remote in. We've never used that option until now with Zoom. It does require that it be a video conference or a telephone call like this. Participating via email does not comply. In terms of town services, request offer assistance. If you go to the main town page, on the right-hand side, yep, can you guys see that? It's got news briefs. Town Services and COVID is the place to find the most up-to-date information about tax, water bills, clerk, et cetera. Request offer assistance. If you are able to provide assistance, or if you know somebody who needs assistance, they can email or call us or use the Google Form link, and we'll try to help people as they navigate this brave new world. Next on the agenda is energy plan review. So tomorrow morning is the PAC's public hearing.
Actually, tomorrow afternoon, yes.
Oh, yes. Yep. Yep, tomorrow at 2:30, they're using GoToMeeting, which is similar to Zoom but a little bit different. You can also call in. I've also uploaded the energy plan hearing draft. Matt and I met last week with members of CCRPC, Melanie Needle, and Taylor Newton, who's new. And they went over things that need to be changed in terms of the siting policies in order to comply with what the state requires. And then a couple other working edits of a few residual comments from folks about mainly things in the introduction. There was one comment, I believe, from Ron about limiting infrastructure for propane or gas lines, because that's regulated by the Utility Commission, that's not something we, the town, have jurisdiction over. But I worked with Melanie and added some language in our pathways where we can incentivize new development to not connect or not expand that infrastructure as it pertains to their development. So what I encourage you guys to do is read through that document, and then at the hearing on April 21st, come with any suggestions, new sentences, new paragraphs, and we'll incorporate everything you guys say and what the PAC says into the hearing. The hearing procedure on April 21st will be a little bit more formal than our typical meeting. We'll open and close the hearing, and I'll just be checking in with you, Chapin, about public comment if people join in via phone or on Zoom, that they have an opportunity to provide public comment. Any questions?
I did have one thing, which is I wondered if we wanted to talk at all this evening about, oh, first of all, if we have comments to bring to that hearing, we should print out the version for the hearing, which has lines numbered, yes?
Yes. Yes.
So we reference line numbers.
Yeah. I would recommend printing out both the hearing draft that's dated just 317, and then the other one that's dated 43. I feel like the line numbers might get messed up a little bit. If you guys would like, we can print those out and put them in our side door Dropbox if you want to pick them up if you don't have a public printer. You can also do a dual monitor if you have that capability at home.
I would appreciate being able to pick them up. I have printed selected pages, like there's so many comments on pages 39, 40, and 41 that I've printed them out, thinking we might be talking about them tonight. But regardless, it would be nice to have the whole thing there, so that any comments from the public, we can quickly go to that section and know what, and make notes too.
Okay, so what I'll do is get back in touch with you guys, it'll probably be in your packet that you'll get before April 21st, and I'll work with Matt and Bonnie about getting some printed materials put in the side door Dropbox, so you have them in front of you for the meeting.
Do you want a number? Would you like a number right now of how many of us would like that? I'm one, who else? You could wave.
Yeah, or use the raise hand button. So G wants one, Chapin wants one. You guys can also email me too, if you decide you want one, I might put an extra copy or two. Terry, if you want one, I can put one in the side door Dropbox as well. All right. Matt, I can hand it over to you for bylaw changes.
Sure, and Melinda's here too, and she put a bunch of work into some of these as well, so. You know, as you might imagine, in the planning office, our daily permit traffic has kind of dropped off significantly, and actually, our DRB traffic is dropping off, although we do have some hearings to get ready for, and we've got staff working from home, which means we've started to look at some of the things that we've had to set aside, both during busier times in the office and also for the Planning Commission, while the Planning Commission was working on the energy plan over the last, I think, seven months or so. So we wanted to bring back draft bylaw changes related to a number of things the PC's been working on over the last year, and you have them listed there. The watershed protection, which is wetland and stream setback, flexibility for existing development, where setbacks have become more stringent and really constrained what people with houses and older developments can do today. Looking at our parking, and so we've got a draft there on parking, pertaining to the recent request from the CRG folks about providing a quantitative amount of open space in the RZD. We have some recommended language and discussion for you there. And then the last one, I don't have a link to, which is Collected Updates, Cross-References, and Connections, which is a great work-from-home project that we're all really enjoying, where you go through and you look at every cross-reference in the bylaw and every reference to state law, and typically you can find some typos while you're doing that as well. And we like to package those up with an upcoming amendment for the Select Board, so that we keep up with that and get it done. So, I think of these, I would like to talk a little bit about the parking one. Melinda, I think you touched the watershed protection draft last, although there's really been no big changes to it, we can talk about that.
I do have one question on that. In the version that's on the website, there's change tracking only on the last couple pages.
Yes.
10 and 11. And one of the changes went away from something we talked about in the Planning Commission, which was that no 150-foot buffer would be reduced to less than 75 feet by a variance, or whatever, a waiver, I can't...
By a waiver.
Waiver. And that no 50-foot buffer would be reduced to less than 25, but that 50 part came out, and maybe that's not relevant, I'm not sure why it, it's... Yeah, and 29.9.8.2. And other, I just wondered if this reflected our discussion from the last time, because for the most part, it seemed to, but I did notice that that was different than what we talked about, and probably for a good reason.
All right, so 8.2 is about variance. So in, if we're talking about something in variance, the whole nature of variance is that it's generally not limited. So the waiver may have a limit.
I see.
But in the case of a variance, what you're trying to do is say, even in a situation where our regulations are so strict that you can't build anything at all, that's why we have variance procedures, because that's when you get, that's when you get whatever flexibility it is you need to achieve a reasonable economic return on your investment of owning that property. So, I can answer that one affirmatively, that's why it would come out of the variance side. We do have limits on the waiver of not allowing the buffer width to be reduced to less than 50 feet. And we had toyed with some different numbers there. On the waiver limit, we had talked about 75. The reason we're showing you 50 in this draft is I've had communication with one particular citizen who, his house was built quite close to the Sucker Brook, and he said, you know, 75 just doesn't do it for me. 50 would, and you know, as you might remember from some of the maps we looked at, there's a bunch of properties that could be in that same situation. I mean, at some point, we've got stuff that was just built right on top of those named streams, and even 50, you know, even 25 feet's not going to get them anything, and I do think it makes sense for there to be a limit to this waiver. But we thought, we thought 50 was still reasonable, and since we're making somebody go through the pain of a DRB hearing to get this waiver anyway, that's enough, and there'd be enough scrutiny on whatever it was they wanted to do and how they wanted to enhance the remaining buffer, that 50 feet would be okay.
And can I just interject something? Do you hear, do you hear me? So, as far as, this really only ends up applying to the 150-foot buffer of name streams and ponds, and not to the smaller streams and wetlands, because to go to give people more flexibility beyond 50 feet from the stream is really counter to state regulations. So, you know, it's counter to the wetland rules. So that really didn't really seem to make much sense to do that. Yeah.
Yep.
I'm good.
I had a question down on 29.9.9.2. Yeah, so here, it talks about the outside SFHAs. It says, "may be enlarged," where is that? Okay, so, so it says that areas, the SFHA areas, yeah, "may be maintained, repaired, replaced, and enlarged, provided that the degree of nonconformity is not increased." So what's the difference between enlarged and nonconformity?
So, in that case, what they're talking about is enlarged, but away from the watershed protection buffer, the part that, so if you have like, you know, a structure that's encroaching on the watershed protection buffer, and you enlarge it on the side that's outside of the watershed protection buffer, then you're not, you're enlarging it, but you're not increasing the nonconformity, because the same amount is still within the watershed protection buffer. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks, I understand that now, thank you.
And mainly what this section, what that section is, is those two paragraphs were in Chapter 2, and prior to this proposed amendment, they were referenced in 29.9.9, and we just decided it would be clearer to just just put the language here rather than making somebody go back to Chapter 2 and look at it.
Yep.
So it's just repeating that language word for word.
Does everybody know what an SFHA is?
Yeah, it's actually in the paragraph, the special foot.
Sorry, I just realized that, okay, good. I didn't want to make, I wasn't sure if we might, Melinda, want to actually change the leading question in 29.9.9.
What about nonconformity?
So just, just because it doesn't say like, is there a difference between a nonconforming structure in a flood zone versus one that's not, or something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
We could do that for clarity.
More direct. Yeah.
Back to the agenda, there are more watershed buffer.
I'm good. Any Planning Commission member or Terry interested in commenting on this one? Let's go on.
Yeah, so I think, just to, I'm sorry, just add one more thing. I think at this point, if you all are comfortable with the language, we'd be looking for a vote to schedule a public hearing and allow the bylaw amendment to be reviewed by the PAC.
Well, that's right, we voted to have public hearings on two things, but not on this, didn't we?
And, you know, yeah.
Yeah, so your votes last time were public hearings related to comprehensive plan amendments. Each of these is a potential bylaw amendment, and I'll echo what Melinda said for the other ones, is we're looking for, you know, if the board is willing to direct us to go ahead and warn all of these for hearings, great. You know, the bigger the batch, the easier it is procedurally for us, but if, I know some of these, like RZD and even parking are a little newer to the group, and may take a little more review before we're there, so we want to, we want to try to get a feel from everybody on that tonight.
Okay, so actually, I'm going to poll everybody, just say on this one, are you ready to see it go to public hearing? Catherine, you can signal by your hand if you prefer.
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Megan?
Yeah, I actually, this may be kind of a larger issue, but I'm having a really hard time preparing for Planning Commission meetings now, I just don't have the time to do a lot of reading before each meeting. And so, so I haven't looked at these yet. I had a look at the agenda and started reading the energy plan edits, and then it turned out we didn't even need to read those, because we're going to have a chance to comment on them. So if I could ask the staff, maybe in consultation with Chapin, to kind of prioritize what you want us to prep or read before our meetings, because I just, I can't keep up with a big workload, and at least right now, while I'm doing 50 hours a week of trying to teach classes online, and I feel like every meeting, I feel like, oh, I should have read that, and I didn't need to read this other thing, and so I'm sorry for the, to jump in with a more general comment, but, you know, we, you know, I appreciate Chapin's leadership and getting more done in our meetings, and also Matt, it's definitely a change from when Ken was the main planner, where we didn't do any prep, and didn't get as much done either. So I definitely appreciate the effort and the intent, but I need some guidance on priorities, because I do not have more than, you know, maybe half an hour, 45 minutes to prep for these meetings. So I'm sorry, I haven't read it, and I, you know, if you want, I can just abstain from this. I haven't read any of the bylaw things. And I don't know, I didn't mean to derail us into some other conversation, but I just can't, I can't vote on these.
I can address that, just to say, I have the same issue, and as your chairperson, I probably should. put that work in and work with the staff to highlight that because I have the same thing. Sometimes I review things that I didn't need to, and I'm always glad I've reviewed things, but prioritizing is important. And I just am very appreciative. We get the materials ahead of time. But I think we should take the next step. I will take the next step working with Emily and Matt.
I, I think, I think the energy plan has been the killer over the last few months is that, you know, there's just so much to review in there every time and you don't know which parts we're going to go over and stuff like that. So I think that that has been really an impact for preparation a lot. So I think once we get beyond that, we may be in a little bit better situation. But again, you know, having that prep work with Chapin and the staff would be really helpful.
Okay, so I will continue this poll with that footnote on it. Gee, how do you feel about these changes? Do you think they're ready to go to hearing? Okay. Jill?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Ron?
You're muted.
I'm unmuted now. Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, and Kate?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I'm not going to just say because it's five out of six or whatever, that are ready to go, that we should, I, can we advise that it's, I want to, Megan, you to have a chance to look if you'd like to, or do you want to say we should go ahead and move this one on without your review?
Just go ahead. I mean, I, I've seen them in the past or, you know, versions of other, you know, conversations that we've had about all these issues. And I, I'm totally fine with the intent of all of them. You know, and I don't need to get into the.
Yeah, that's my gut feeling too.
That's fine. I'm fine with that. I just wanted to, you know, this is sort of like, oh, this is, I keep meaning to mention this and I keep forgetting and so, yeah, so go, please move forward.
As staff, I definitely appreciate the feedback and especially as we're now, our whole lives are changed because of the COVID pandemic, our time schedules have changed. And we're moving to this more online format. If you guys have any feedback about how we can keep making this process more efficient, both time and content wise. In terms of what we're reviewing tonight, it's kind of a prelude to what you'll see at the public hearing. So I think, Matt, we put the public hearing for maybe the first or second meeting in May, but we could always warn it for the first or second meeting in June, which would give you guys a little bit more time before, weeks before the hearing to further review these documents.
Yeah, we kind of, yeah, we, we kind of, you know, jumped on the opportunity of, of finally not needing to do energy plan work to, to load all these bylaw drafts back out to you. And, you know, I think, Megan, your idea of, you know, myself and Emily working with Chapin a little bit on, on focusing the work of the group. And we've, we've gotten a pretty good feel for what the capacity in one meeting really is and we can, we can work on that. So a head nod on if, if there's one that like this feels a little easier, we don't need to see it again until you warn the hearing. You, you still get another shot at, you know, making amendments at the hearing as well. The hearing doesn't have to be in one night. You can continue the hearing to a future meeting. We don't want to spiral out too far into that. But none of these are emergencies.
Without objection, we'll move the watershed protection one, ready to go to public hearing. The parking one, I was wanting some explanation of what has changed in there and why.
Sure, let me, let me give you a bit of a.
And I think it's probably if, if there's changes there that need to be warned in a public hearing, could you outline them for us and then we probably are going to want to look at this more?
Sure. Hang on a second. I just got an email from Shayla and I'm just going to respond to it. Just wanted to know if we need a quorum. Or she's quite busy. Okay, get that off my screen and there we go. Okay. So everybody might recall some of the work we've done around parking and some of the backstory to this. You know, wanting to make sure we get the right amount of parking with new development, wanting to really make sure that we're applying a careful analysis when we're looking at shared parking or particularly as people start to offset onsite parking demand with street parking or other resources, making sure that we don't have, you know, too many projects all pointing at the same street parking space and saying, hey, that, that space works for me, so don't make me build one. And at the same time, trying to avoid some of the consequences we've had under our current rules, like when Maple Tree Place proposed over 200 new spaces. And in reviewing our bylaw, even with a share analysis, we found that if we were going to make Maple Tree Place build parking today, we'd be making them build even more than that. And it was a rather surprising result for us. So the other part of the backstory, the planning commission, you, some of you folks did some work doing some Black Friday parking things, taking pictures of parking lots over a year and a half ago, looking at parts of Williston that have a lot of parking, other parts that maybe don't. And then we retained the help of the regional planning commission and resource systems group to help us further review parking. So RSG prepared a state of the practice memo that they presented to you about some other communities that have done away with parking minimums or, or other things like that. I'll add as an addendum to that, that since then, the city of South Burlington where I live has actually also done away with parking minimums. They, they, they beat, beat everybody to it somehow. I'm not sure how, but it was very controversial. At least with one or two members of the DRB. In fact, one member of the DRB ran for city council with that as a, as a linchpin issue that he felt it was giving up too much on the behalf of the city to do away with those minimums. So the other piece of context I want to provide about that, because it kind of informs what I'm talking about in the bylaw, is the way South Burlington looks at parking minimums when they had them is different from the way Williston has traditionally done it. And the big difference is that South Burlington has looked at parking minimums every single time the use of a property has changed. In other words, if, if there's an empty space in a strip mall and it was a doctor and now it's going to be a bookstore, somebody makes a calculation of all of the parking demand in that strip mall and decides whether replacing that doctor with that bookstore is going to cause a parking problem. We probably have the authority to do that in the existing bylaw, but we in practice have never done it. And the only time it's gotten real bad, I think, is the administrative approval of Get Air Trampoline Park in the same building as Burlington Beer. Where at the right time of day on the right weekend, it can, you know, be quite, quite busy and it gets a little oversubscribed and, and some of the customers tend to park in parking lots next door. Which if there was a shared parking agreement between the two owners would be just fine and would actually be a great use of those, the parking spaces next door for businesses that don't operate on the weekends when, when Get Air and Burlington Beer are busiest. So the other piece that RSG did for us is they developed a ArcMap based shared parking tool. And the shared parking tool that they created for us takes the shared parking analysis that we require under our bylaw today and refines it greatly. And I can tell you how much more refined it is in, in one way. The current shared parking analysis we use just assumes a quote unquote typical day of the year and looks at the time of day throughout that typical day and looks at the demand for all the uses. So a doctor's office at three in the afternoon is usually like X. And a bookstore is usually like Y. And then you, you combine them and see if their schedules align in such a way that parking can be shared. What RSG created for us, what this bylaw would, would point people towards if they want to reduce their parking is an analysis that actually goes out 13 months of the year. So we know that if we're in a retail heavy environment, that there are two pieces of the month of December and they're very different from one another. There's before Christmas and after Christmas. And we know that if we're looking again at that bookstore versus that doctor's office, that it really matters what month of the year it is. And there might be a share that is not apparent on the quote unquote typical day where we're averaging out all the days of the year. It actually works really well because the bookstore is really busy that, that run up to Christmas and the doctor's offices. So that's built into this amendment. And I'll go through, Emily, if you just want to start scrolling to the first couple amendments that I've tried to write in here, we'll, we'll just kind of go through them. But the main one is to try to point people to that more refined share analysis. So you still have your table.
Did I miss it?
It looks like it, maybe it didn't render in red. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I could not tell what was new in this and what was not.
Uh, hang on a second.
And Matt, you should as co-host have share abilities.
Yeah, I'm going to bring up, I'm going to bring up my version in Teams and share it out. Hang on a second. And I'll, I'll send this around to everybody for. Okay. Hang on a second and I'll get this up. The takeover screen sharing. And soon as my word is open.
I'll work on my backdrop thing so it doesn't invade my face next time.
Don't wear that green screen makeup anymore, Chapin. So can you all see my chapter 14 now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So one of the things I mentioned about a distinction between Burlington or South Burlington and Williston is that on these day-to-day administrative permits, we're often not looking at parking. And I think we should, I think we have the, the capacity to do it at this point in the town's history. And, you know, there is a lot that can change with, with administrative changes of use in these multi-use places. So I'm comfortable as the zoning administrator saying, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to ask people some questions about their parking generation when they're changing uses in a way that's challenging. So in 14.1, I'm just naming administrative or discretionary permit. And then most of what I'm doing in 14.2 here, and it's a lot, so I apologize, is I'm, I'm de-emphasizing the idea of a parking minimum. And I'm explaining that the table that talks about parking generation in this bylaw establishes a maximum, which it always has. And that for bicycle spaces, it establishes a minimum, which it continues to do. And then in 14.2, we start talking about this parking share. So can parking be shared? And I've added just a gentle statement here, different uses of land have different times of day, days of the week and months of the year where the parking demand, they generate varies widely. I've added a little bit of discussion about what those calculations are about shared parking that the DRB can ask for. And I'm referencing appendix J of the bylaw, which is a new appendix that doesn't exist yet. It would, it would be added and that would be the instruction manual for the RSG shared parking analysis tool. So we would say to the applicant, all right, we want you to share parking. Go use this tool and, and show us how it works. And if, if anybody thinks we're not too hard on the development community, I would challenge you to use this tool. It's a, it's an adventure to actually make this tool work, but it is doable. And again, you know, the number of times that this comes up, even at the DRB level, it came up with Maple Tree Place. I don't think we've had a really huge shared parking discussion since that one. And I really would have liked to have had the applicants at Maple Tree Place run this, run this scenario for Maple Tree Place. I think, I think it would have revealed a very different result from what we got and, and one that's more aligned with what we sort of all see in the field at Maple Tree Place. So this, this is what pushes someone to that. And I, I did give myself some authority here as zoning administrator. If there was a really big change of use to, to say, well, you know, this is just an administrative permit. It's not going to the DRB, but I'm going to make you do the calculation anyway. And again, that's my, you know, my Burlington Beer, Get Air example where there wasn't really a reason to bring the change in tendency to the DRB. The threshold's too low. But had the administrator had a tool where to say, you know, it just feels like that's going to be an awful lot of parking demand on that site. Can you do the share analysis for me? So that's that.
So Matt?
Yes.
Is there any downside to postponing any decision on whether to move this to public hearing to the next meeting?
No downside whatsoever. We've got lots of time on this one. I know we've never shown you bylaw language on it before. And frankly, even internally, I think we've struggled a little bit with the, the most articulate way to, to work shared parking analysis into this.
So I'd like to recommend that if people have feedback to you right now, we go ahead and do that right now. But that we, the working assumption is that we will be for the next meeting, see a version of this that looks like this, where we can see what was changed and what wasn't.
You got it.
And, and do proper review and, and I'll work with you guys to prioritize. And then we'll, we'll act on it next time. So anybody want to comment, give comment at this point or, or object to that way of dealing with it?
I agree with that.
Makes sense to me. I think we have too much incurious surface as it is, so. Good.
So I'll give you a tour of just a few other things. I, I wanted to be able to say I crossed out the word minimum somewhere. To keep, keep my planner cred with the other Chittenden County planners. I'm making a note, a change to the table here, propose taking the word minimum out. This is the maximum allowed off-street parking. It's the minimum required bike parking. And I, I'm getting rid of minimums, but I'm not really getting rid of minimums and I'll explain that in a second. So you may be aware that we have some ways today by which developers can reduce the amount of parking we require them to build. They can do a shared parking analysis, which is most of what we've been talking about. They can commit to reduce bus pass program if they're proximate to transit. And I think there's one other, but I'll get to it in a second. And generally that discount has been in the range of about 20%, whether it's through shared parking, being near transit or some combination of those. So we have a lot of development in town that's, that's built out at about 20% below, sorry, below these, these numbers and is, is generally working okay. And generally the DRB has given those discounts fairly freely in their site plan review. So rather than give them out and say that what we're doing is making people provide free bus passes to their employees and then never checking on anybody to see if they're actually doing it and relying on just something that's really not enforceable, why don't we just give some flexibility in that 20% range? And it's really when someone wants to go under that, that we really need to start doing some more analysis. So I will go down, I'm going to skip 1424 for a second, which is about having more parking than the maximum. And there are some ways to do that. I'll come back to that. And then in 14.2.5, I say, what if, what if I propose less than the maximum? And I've set this, I'm going to move my cursor right over this. I've set this at 80%. And so what I'm saying here is if the bylaw says you can have a maximum of 100 parking spaces and you propose 80, that's going to be okay. But if you propose 79 or fewer, you're going to need to do some homework in order to show us that you really ought to be able to, to build something more than 20% under the required maximum. So that's what I mean when I say I got rid of the word minimum, but I haven't entirely gotten rid of the minimums. There's, there's still an effective minimum at 80% of the maximum. And then the ability to go below that is going to be at the discretion of the board or administrator. And you're going to have to go through that transit analysis. I think I still want to take away the bus, the bus pass program just because we're not enforcing it and I don't foresee us having the capacity to enforce it. And I wanted to add a little bit of discussion about. And I wanted to add a little bit of discussion about on-street and I added or municipal parking. There is no municipal parking in Williston right now besides, you know, the town hall parking lot. We, we don't operate parking lots. But I think someday we might. I think some of our work in the growth center with official map transit center, et cetera. May result in that, and I want to be able to give people the ability to offset to that.
On that?
Yes.
On that one section, how about instead of about bus pass system saying something about being a member of a transit? What do we call Catma, the transit something?
EMA, Transportation Management Association.
Association, because that is easily verifiable. And certainly should decrease the need for single vehicle use of employees and residents. It probably wouldn't affect shoppers. Customers.
I'll just put that in now while it's, while it's fresh in our minds. I think, I think that is more workable. So, and then I think down here, this is just referencing back to the revised parking, shared parking study language, which goes to the appendix J, which means we're, we're going to use the tool that RSG. Developed for us. So I wanted to go back up from there and talk about, well, what if I, what if I want to build more parking? What if, what if your maximum's not big enough for me? And we've always had some language about that. That's this 14.2.4. One way that we allow that is carpool and alternate fuel vehicle spaces. And the one thing I'm recommending here is to take out the 5% limit and let, let people build more of those. Because we're seeing more alternative fuel vehicles. This bylaw was written in 2006, 2007 and. There were no Nissan Leafs and there were no Teslas in the world at the time. So I think allowing for a larger percentage of spaces. To be for those vehicles makes some sense. Carpooling, I wish I could say there's more carpooling going on now, but gas is cheap and and there's not. But certainly the alternate fuel, fuel vehicles. The other part is if you want to build more spaces, that you can see in the black what we have today. And down here. I've added two things additional to consider. One is if you want to build more parking in the maximum, again, do a study or a calculation, show us that you need it. We have had. A few applicants in the last decade who have been able to say, well, I'm putting this business in your town. I have a business just like it in South Burlington and I find that my parking is really full all the time. Or I find that I'm, you know, I'm over the limit. There are sometimes applicants who can, who can convince the DRB that what we're, what we have in our limit is a little low. The biggest one we're dealing with with this, we haven't had any new ones, but I've got some existing ones is medical. A lot of the existing medical offices used to have a room or two in them that were records rooms. Those are off in the cloud now and those rooms have turned into exam rooms. And then with just everything that's happening in healthcare. You have high, much higher turnover in a lot of the medical offices than we used to have. So. In the parking lot, there are three vehicles parked for every doctor, the person who's on their way out the door and scheduling. Person who's seeing the doctor and the person who's sitting in the waiting room waiting to go to the doctor. So if you drive around Williston and look for places with really full parking lots, middle of the day, middle of the week. Not right now, but they're, they're going to be medical offices. So I do think there's some, some rationale to let the DRB be a little more flexible on that. And then the other one is if somebody wants to or feels that they need to provide more ADA spaces, I think it's worth. Letting somebody do that. One of the, one of the safety valves on this is like if you're a retailer. Generally retailers, they're not going to see adding more ADA spaces as being like they're getting a whole bunch more parking because it's restricted in who can use it. But we have had some users, you know. Who, again, in a lot in the medical side, who maybe they want to designate some more ADA spaces across the front of that building. Because they know that's a big chunk of their clientele. So I, I don't think there's a lot of potential for abuse there. In Williston, we used to require more ADA spaces than the federal minimum. And we, we did away with that in a revision a couple of years ago and went back to the federal minimum. And I think that made sense in terms of, you know. Not having too much impervious surface, but once in a while, there's somebody who who could probably justify having a few more. So that's that. I, so I talked about decrease, I talked about increase. And I think the only other thing we did. Is there was a need for coherence between these two numbers where you see my red. And that's the minimum backup distance in a parking space that is at 90 degrees to the curb. And the MAC minimum aisle width between those spaces and keeping those the same. And. Some communities go for 24 feet on both of these. Some communities go for 20 feet on both of these. We had one at 20 and one at 24. We did a revision where we put them both at 24. I think that's a little big. South Burlington's at 20. Take it for what you, what you think. Can people back out of a, of a parking space into a slightly shallower aisle? The nice thing about a 20-foot drive aisle in a parking lot compared to 24 is it slows people down. It's a, you know, it feels a little tighter and people drive a little slower and they maneuver a little more when they're coming in and out of spaces. So not, not something I feel really strongly about, but I, but I thought it was worth considering since we were in the parking chapter. From there, I go all the way down to bike parking and all the way through the outdoor spaces and the indoor spaces to the beloved end of trip facility. Requirement. Nobody, no applicant complains more about anything in our bylaw than having to put a shower in their building for bike commuters, but we've been making people do it for a long time. And all I'm doing here is rather than do this one per gender, two per gender, three per gender, I'm just using numbers. Tends to align better with the all-gender bathroom stuff that's come out of the state and. The intent was always to get a certain number of, of end of trip facilities anyway, and I think it just works just, just the same to do it that way. So that's the quick, the quick tour through parking.
Any questions from commissioners?
I actually had one, not about any of the changes you made, but would. What is this definition of long-term bicycle parking?
Sure, there is a definition and it's right here in 1484. Basically, it's a secure place. You can park a bike for a longer period of time than if you were like a customer visiting a store. So. You know, the intent here is if I'm a bike commuter, I've got, you know, a hundred bucks worth of lights on my bike and 50 bucks worth of tools in the bag. And when I get to work, I want to park my bike in, in something secure. So somebody walking by can't go and just take all that stuff off or, you know, mess with my bike. So this has played out in a number of different ways in town. Some, some industrial users just have a corner of the warehouse they designate as the secure bike parking area. If you ever go into Union Bank at Finney Crossing, there's a really nice room with hooks on the wall and it's right next to the shower. It's right inside the front door. So there's a, there's a locked room that if you work there, you've got the convo to the room and you hang your bike up and go take your shower and. Go from there. We haven't seen anybody do it with external lockers yet, but you know, the sort of covered bike lockers would work for this. We may see that with the state police barracks. Apparently, Buildings and General Services for the state of Vermont does not like indoor bike storage. I believe there's a very rusty stairwell at One National Life because people were keeping bikes with road salt on them in the stairwell and the manager didn't like it. So, so we, we went over this with them in a recent site plan review and they said specifically, oh, we're not putting the bikes inside. It's causes, he actually said it caused an air quality problem, which really didn't make any sense to me at all.
4413.
Yeah, that's what we said. That's, that's the way the state gets out of having to follow local zoning. So they, they wave 4413 around a lot, but. But they said we, they would, they would do covered bike lockers. If you've ever been up to the National Life building, they have these like Lexan dome things that someone could lock a bike to. They almost meet our requirement, not quite, but I'd love to see somebody do a covered bike locker instead, just so I could take a picture of it and. Say that somebody was doing it in town.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about a on-street parking compared to off-street parking. The hotel here in the hamlet has trucks come and. The driver is staying at the hotel. And so he has parked his truck in the past on Day Lane. Which is really too small for the size of the truck. Or they'll bring the trucks in and and get all cattywampus getting in to the parking space. And it's a conflict, but I don't know how to resolve it in my mind. Of a facility or a land use where they're, they like a hotel. And they're using different sized vehicles that are, they don't fit in the parking spaces on the street or in the parking lot. And how do I control having the trucks come in and take out all the street trees on daylight? So it's just a conundrum.
I don't know if I have an immediate answer for that, but it's a really good point. You know, we, we tend to look at trucks when we view commercial sites for, you know, for turning movements and can, can the truck get in and get out? But we don't have any minimum or really any statement in this piece of the bylaw about. Providing any kind of truck parking, which is, which is interesting. You know, the, the case you bring up is something that certainly happens, right? People park trucks or other big vehicles at hotels. Yeah, I don't, I don't know where you'd park a semi if you were staying overnight at the new one at Finney Crossing either. You might find a street space that's long enough to do that. And then your, your thought about interfering with the street trees is another one. I. I don't think anybody thought of that. So I don't know. I'll, I'll look around, Ron, and if there's something I can propose in here that starts to address that, I'll try to, I'll try to find something.
Right. I mean, I hate to use the zoning violation word, but. If you didn't plan your parking lot to accommodate the parking of vehicles beyond that standard parking space size. Then in theory, I, I don't think they should be allowed to park there. And then with the street parking thing, it's all, how does the town handle its street parking ordinance? Are. Trucks or vehicles over a certain size allowed to use these spaces or are they specifically reserved for personal cars below a certain length? I don't know.
Yeah, that's, it's a really good point. I mean. There's a lot being done in, in planning nationally around street parking and balancing street parking demand against demand for things like curbside delivery. And loading and unloading zones. And you're seeing cities right now because of the explosion of delivery, you're seeing them take out street parking spaces to accommodate delivery vehicles.
Right. Which maybe is something that this. Parking revision. Language could address is delivery vehicles beyond the normal parking size. I mean, because what a hotel could always do is, is designate certain areas that are normally sized for a regular car, but can also. A truck could pull all the way through. Kind of thing.
And I think Ron's point is particularly about overnight parking of large trucks.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Terry, do you have any comment on this one that you would like to offer from public?
No, but that's all new information to me. I never thought about, a lot about parking. So it's good to learn some new stuff.
And you'll be mostly interested, I think, in the next one. Um.
Okay.
Correct. You will be interested in the next one. All right. So if it, assuming everybody's okay with it, we're going to table this for this meeting. And pick it up again next time. And in the meantime, there will be a version available to us that has the changes marked.
Will do. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to stop my screen share here.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Okay, and the third. Bylaw change was related, ready to residential zoning district open space. And who's giving the background on this? And I'll just preface that by if commissioners, this also didn't have change tracking on it. If commissioners. Want to discuss it in more depth next time, that's fine.
Is it possible to bring up the track change document in Teams?
Yes.
Okay.
Emily, do you want to bring this one up and drive or do you want me to bring it up?
If you bring it up, I'm worried if I open Teams, it'll make my computer really unhappy. It doesn't like these two big programs together sometimes.
I will share my screen and just give me a second.
Did you want me to, to kind of go over the visuals with the, with the PowerPoint thing that I put together or?
Yeah, actually. Do you have access? Yeah, make Melinda a co-host.
Cause then you can. I, I don't have access. I don't have access to that.
I'll bring it up.
Your co-host anyway.
Let's see, I'm on screen two. I'll bring up the PowerPoint and. That's not the PowerPoint I wanted. Sorry, that's a different one. Oh, no, that was yours. I'm sorry.
This is not the PowerPoint you were looking for.
All right. Let's see, protection of, all right, everybody see that?
Yeah.
I can even go slideshow. All right.
And then just put it in slideshow mode. And then I'll probably, and I guess I'll have to ask you to drive the slideshow too.
Are you not seeing it in slideshow mode right now?
We are.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. So just let me know when you want to advance.
Yeah, go ahead and advance. I don't know what it is, but go ahead.
All right. So, so there's, there's our parcel size.
So this proposed amendment came up as a request from the group Citizens for Responsible Growth. They wanted the planning commission to consider a proposed amendment to add open space, an open space requirement. Of 50% in the residential zoning district. Currently, there, there is a requirement for open space. In what are considered open space developments, developments of greater than. I think it's greater than 10 and a half acres are considered open space developments in the RZD. But there's no quantitative minimum of required open space. So, so this proposed amendment would just add a quantitative requirement. So. I tried to kind of. Do a little GIS to analyze. You know, kind of what that would mean and what, what currently are. Is the distribution of different sized parcels in the RZD. So there on that slide, you see all of the parcels in the RZD. The vast majority of them are less than. Point six six of an acre. Which would make them unable to subdivide further. And then there are. Let's see, there's about a total of. 262 that are somewhere between point six six. Of an acre and five acres. And then there are 33 parcels that are between five and 10 acres and there are 36 parcel. Wait, is that right? Yeah, 36 parcels that are. Greater than 10 and a half acres. So then if you go, you go to the next slide. But as it turns out, a lot of these parcels are, are not able to be subdivided further because they have. Conservation restrictions on them. Either they are held by. Either they are held by, either they are a third, a third party or the town has a conservation easement on them. Or they're owned by the town with, for the purpose of conserving open space. Or they, they are designated open space from a previous subdivision. So that's all of the green parcels that you see are protected in some way. So they're not able to be subdivided, at least under the current regulations. And some of them are permanently protected under a third-party conservation easement. I also included some area outside of the RZDs as you see there. So anyway, go, go to the next slide if you would. So this shows you the actual parcels in the RZD that are subdividable. And looking at that, you see that there's, there's two parcels that are less than an acre, but greater than 0.66 acres. There are 70 parcels that are between two and five acres. There's 26 parcels, or I'm sorry, 16 parcels that are between five and 10 and a half acres. And there's 11 parcels that are greater than 10 and a half acres. And then go on to the next slide. And then if you, but if you look at, and I think the, the, at least on my screen, the legend or the, the little text is hidden by all the pictures of people. But basically this, when you look at the acreage of those parcels, the, the acreage of the parcels greater than 10 and a half acres makes up the majority of the acreage. So parcels greater than 10 and a half acres make up 414 acres in the RZD. And that's, you can see that those, the, the big three parcels south of Mountain View, that's a, a big piece of currently undeveloped land. And then you have parcels greater than five acres making up 129 acres or so. And then the parcels that are less than five acres making up about 152 acres. So I think that's, I think there are no other slides to show, but that just kind of gives you an idea of the distribution. Oh, wait, there's one more slide. That gives you an idea of the parcel size distribution and how many large parcels there really are. So in terms of, you know, possible thresholds to require, you know, open space, if you were to require 25% of open space. And then, so there's basically two different, kind of two different ways to go or two different decision points. And one is how much open space do you want to require? And the second decision point would be, what's the threshold at which you start requiring open space? Is it five acres? Any parcel greater than five acres? Is it any parcel greater than 10 and a half acres? Which is currently what we, the threshold established in the ARZD. Where the staff is recommending that we have a threshold of 10 and a half acres. And that, you know, you might consider a 50% requirement. And if that was the case, there's a potential to, to protect about, I think, 272 acres of open space. And then in the chart below, it just gives you a few examples of previous subdivisions and how much open space is protected out of those subdivisions. It's just a sampling. You know, I'm sure there are, there's others with different open space. So just gives you an idea of kind of, and I see that Ron has a question.
Yes, I was wanting to know the definition of open space.
So, yeah, so open space, when I say open space, I'm referring to a piece of that parent parcel. So say there's a parcel that's proposed to development. The designated open space on that parcel would be permanently protected as open space under our bylaws today. So it, it couldn't be subdivided further. It couldn't be developed. It's just, yeah, it's just protected open space. With nothing on it.
But it can be forested or open or, or meadow.
Or agriculture.
Yep.
So, so I mean, typically this is not the best acreage they have. Then it'll be steep slopes or swamps or something like that, right?
Yeah, so that, so you bring up a good point. And that is that there, you know, in any proposed development, there's going to be constrained lands on it, like steep slopes, like wetlands and wetland buffers. And all of that should be in the protected open space. It, it, in the ARZD, we require all of the steep slopes and wetland watershed protection buffers to be, to be in the open space. And I think that requirement should be the same in the, in the RZD.
Can there be ground-mounted solar or wind generation on these parcels?
Sure, I mean, is, am I, yeah, I mean, I think there could be. I don't know. Do you have any thoughts now, Emily?
Well, my question was, you know, you're asking, can it, can you have those things with it within the protected open space? If somebody has subdivision open space? And I think the answer in our current bylaw is yes. But I'm out of extra monitors to bring it up on right now.
Right, I believe so. Otherwise, why did we go through all that rigor of the constraints? Analysis of the energy plan.
Right.
But I think, yeah, if it's, if it's regulated by the Public Utility Commission, then it can be in open space. It can't be in, in, on steep slopes or, or wetland buffers, I don't believe. In the similar way, you can't have any development in those very constrained areas. But other parts of the open space that aren't constrained could have solar or wind.
So, so it sounds like then that we've got a bunch of steep, steep slopes and wetlands that don't have anything on it. But any open space that is on a, it could be filled with solar, right? I mean, you'd have houses and in between the houses and there's nice wildlife corridor. That could have been a wildlife corridor. There's now solar. So I mean, essentially you've got 100% of developable and as, with no open space, what I would consider open space.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. And I guess, yeah, that's definitely worth consideration. And I, and again, I don't know how much regulatory, I don't think that the town would have much regulatory authority over a solar development like that, except, except that in the constrained areas, in the known and possible constraints. But yeah.
It, it reminds me of the discussion we had about the energy plan with, when you cite it in a view corridor, we changed it to say, not that you couldn't cite it there, but that it couldn't predominate the view and interfere with the view. And, and as an example, I would say that the 25 solar trackers behind the town hall do not stop that parcel from being open space. It certainly is, has not changed the wildlife patterns.
Yeah, but I would see that different than the one we have on Mountain View where it's, you know, fixed panels that are reasonably close together, which I think detracts from the open spaceness of it.
Intense, yes.
I need a definition of open space then, because having solar panels on my open space makes me think it's not so open.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my point, yeah.
What is our, our current requirement?
So we, remember, we, if, once you've connected that solar panel to the grid, the town does not regulate it. So the way state law has been set up in Vermont, solar, solar and wind generation that's tied to the grid is regulated by the Public Utility Commission. So what you are all doing in the development of the energy plan is exerting a little bit more authority over where solar and wind can go by developing those preferred citing policies. And the interplay between what can happen on a piece of land, like some of the ones on, on the maps we were just looking at, some of what can happen on that land is going to be related to what our bylaws say about residential subdivision. Some of it's going to be related to what our energy plan says about preferred citing policies. And the two are kind of going to overlap to some degree. So you could have, I, I think what we're kind of getting to is, could you have a residential subdivision that sets aside 50% of the base lot area as open space that can never be developed, that then covers that open space with panels? And the answer is, if our preferred citing policy that's coming out of the energy plan has not identified those areas as known or potential constraints, you, you could end up with solar in that, in that meadow typically is, is where you would see it. And that's, that's why those things have some, you know, have some consequence. You know, so, you know, Ron, to your point of, well, what the heck is open space anyway? You're, I think you're right. And, and the answer is, open space is where you don't put houses, basically. And then, and you know, and then we have certain, certain resources that we, in the bylaw today for ag rural and in the language you're going to see when we, when we bring up the bylaw for RZD, we have resource areas that we're saying, yes, you know, that's got to be part of your open space if you have that on your parcel.
So in order to maintain, so it doesn't have to be in the energy plan, what we, where we cite things to still achieve substantial deference. Is that correct? In other words, if we have something in the bylaws that says, the comprehensive plan that says that we're, that we believe that the 50% open space should be without structures on it, that, would that have an influence on the regulatory agency?
No. So the only thing that has influence on the regulatory agency is the policies in the energy plan. So, you know, that's, that's basically, you know, what, the idea of the towns and cities having any deference whatsoever in the PUC process has been predicated on this idea of like, well, if a town wants a say over where solar goes, it needs to come up with an energy plan. And that's, that's where Williston, you know, has been, is, is in the process of doing that. But you have to treat, you have to, you have to be careful that you're not making a special case out of solar. You can't treat it more restrictively than in other kinds of development. This, this example we're talking about is probably a little different than that. But you really, you really have to stay away from trying to regulate solar via anything that's happening in your zoning bylaw.
So this is, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is a complex issue that we'll be talking about more with the energy plan as well. And I don't want the discussion of solar or energy to predominate this discussion about open space in the residential district. And I also want to make sure we give a chance for Terry to comment, because this was in response to the CRG input about open space in residential district. And it certainly, I want to thank you, Melinda, because it certainly, for me, turned a hypothetical question or an abstract question into a real question by showing what areas could be developed and what size they are, and therefore what could be the result in terms of our open space. And I really appreciate being able to see that. I wouldn't, there is the commensurate residential zoning district. But there, wasn't there, there was a bylaw thing on that too, right?
Yes, and I can, I can bring up the language to show you if you want to switch to that.
Want to predicate this on that we, we should review this more and, and table it till next meeting in, in order to digest fully.
Kate, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, yeah. Well, my question was, what, what is our current requirement? And based on the developments that you had listed, and I know that that was just sampling, we're closer over the 50% in most of those developments. So to other people's points of what is the definition of open space, I thought they might be getting at more, are we having it broken up in, you know, a spot here and a spot there versus keeping it all together? Or, you know, what is, what are we really trying to get out of, out of this? Because it seems as though we wouldn't really need it based on those numbers.
Yeah, and it varies like, so when it's all together, we call that sort of a contiguous open space. And the, it's, I probably have to have the language in front of me, but the, but the RZD, I believe, says that it should be contiguous. These developments that I've listed here vary in the degree of continuity. I mean, some of them, you know, it's all over the place. And, you know, like, I guess, I guess I could point to South Ridge as one that's more contiguous maybe than others. And maybe Brendan Woods is one that's sort of, you know, got, got it in different places all, all around. So it does vary for sure, but the, the, the goal is always more, more continuous is better.
And I'd like to. Sorry, Melinda, if I could interrupt for a second, I wanted to respond a little bit to G's comment that open space in developed areas is mostly wetland or steep slopes. I just want to say, if you look at some of those examples, like South Ridge and Brendan Woods, the open space is not entirely those. Much of the open space is part of the, I think what CRG was saying they want in terms of views and a feeling of openness in our heritage of farmland.
Yeah. If you go to files and then the, I believe I put the language, I put the track change file in there.
Is this not it that I've got up now?
It, it might be.
I think, I think it is. This is, this is just the shared one off of Teams, so.
Oh, I don't see it.
We don't see it either, Matt. We just see.
Which I might, I might have.
You might have to switch back to Microsoft where like go to your share screen button.
Let me, let me pull that up. Share. Hang on a second, I'll start it again.
While you do that, Terry, I think you had a comment.
Yeah, I just, I can't see on my screen where to raise my hand. I, I've seen it on other meetings, but anyway, I just had a comment. That was a lot of information. Those, those maps were great. I was just trying to figure out, get a sense of where, as where all the roads were. But it would be good to really take a look at that, to see how all those situations play out on different sized parcels. And I guess we, as a group, of course, because of this whole COVID 19, COVID 19 thing has happened, we really haven't been able to meet as a group and really meet, but. Thing has happened, we really haven't been able to meet as a group, um, and really meet, but, um. I just said, the other thing too was I wasn't even really thinking about solar panels as a part of open space. We were really thinking about. Decreasing just the intensity of these developments, um, decreasing traffic, you know, increasing the quality of life. So that adds a whole new. Element to open space, um. And I guess that's your energy policy we'll have to look at, uh. And I guess I'm just thinking of trying to kind of figure out how this whole scenario would play out, like just to use an example. Uh, the golf course development that's going to be put in that is going to have a hundred and forty-one houses on thirty acres. You know, what would, what would that look like if there was fifty percent open space there? So that's. One, you know, just something I could wrap my head around. So that's was my comment.
Well, really briefly, I'll just say, you know, right now, this does not change the allowed residential density, which is based on the par- parcel area. So it could look like a hundred and forty-one houses on fifteen acres next to fifteen acres of open space. That's, that's probably not what somebody would choose to build in that scenario. Because it would push them toward dwelling types that, um, don't typically get built in this zoning district like apartment buildings and things like that. But unless you change the allowed units per acre, which is not part of the current proposal. You're not necessarily changing the number of units that you end up with, you're changing where they are placed on the parcel and how close to one another. Uh, and you could end up, you know, packing them into one part of the parcel in order to, uh, create a bigger piece of open space on the other part. Practically speaking, I think it would reduce the unit count again because of the, the type of units that are generally marketed and marketable in this part of town. You know, we don't, we don't see some of that denser stuff here, um.
So there is no, there is no, um, limit to how many. Uh, houses that you can put on a per acre?
Yes, there is a limit, but it's not, but it's not changing under this proposal and it's, and it's based on the acreage of the parcel that you start with. So if you, if you start with thirty acres, that's when you make that calculation, you know, minus wetlands and steep slopes. Then you, your, what your open space requirement does is it, it can change the allowed subdivision design, so. I think, um, Emily, we were looking at this, the, um, staff report draft for Catamount Golf. I don't think the way Catamount Golf is laid out in a preliminary sense, um, would meet. A, a fifty percent quantitative open space requirement. It, it needs more open space. And that could impact how many units they would choose to build.
I think they said about twenty percent.
Yeah, sounds about right.
Is there a difference between green space and open space?
Uh, one exists in the bylaw and the other one doesn't, um, so. We, we use the term open space, we don't use the term green space, um. What I would say is that within what we say you have to include in your open space, there are natural areas that you really, really can't do anything with. Uh, you know, like wetlands and watershed protection buffers, um, but. You know, you could have some fairly intensive agriculture, for example, happening on a piece of open space under Williston zoning and, and that would be. Perfectly allowed, in fact, generally encouraged, um.
I'm, I'm just dealing with the hamlet here is we have the gazebo park. Everybody calls it a green space and then we have an open space where some of. Planned units didn't get built and got reassigned to some apartments adjacent. To us, so we have what is called the park and then open space and then recently. The developer says he has development brought still on both of those spaces. And so I, I'm, I'm confused if there's an official or a legal definition of open space in land use law.
So what, what there is for us is if there's permanently protected open space that had to be protected as part of a subdivision or development approval. As opposed to simply land within the development that, that wasn't built on or hasn't been built on. And maybe could be built on. I don't know if I would go so far on as to say there's rights to develop on that land. Um, in that there's no permit to, to develop on that land. You're referring to, as far as I know, the, the units were. Reallocated somewhere else in the project, leaving behind undeveloped area. If, if your developer were to come to me and say, well, I, I moved those houses off into those apartment buildings. Uh, now I'd like to put houses there anyway, I would say, well, you need to go to the development review board and apply for an amendment. And we would need to look at the whole project and see if it's still complied with the bylaw if you were to do that. As opposed to, uh, like in the, um, examples of residential subdivisions Melinda had in her slideshow. Somebody came and said, well, I represent the South Ridge Homeowners Association. And we'd like to take some of our open space and turn it into another cul-de-sac with, with some houses on it. I, I wouldn't say go apply to the DRB and see if, see if they'll say yes, I would just say, no, you can't do that. That open space was set aside as permanently protected, uh, as a condition of approval of the original subdivision. And that's the kind of thing when somebody wants to develop in open space, uh, that we, we fight about sometimes even in Superior Court, which is, uh. What I got to do for the DeVita project down in the south part of town and unfortunately we lost, um, because. Very much to your point, Ron, the, the way the board and the town were defining open space at the time was a little less prescriptive than it is today. And so we were, we were trying to interpret a nineteen ninety-six version of what the town thought open space was and, and it didn't quite hold. I think we're in better shape today.
Okay.
The other point I want to make real quick is that there are also things that people might think of like green space that are like neighborhood parks. So a neighborhood park might be fairly developed, um, but we wouldn't necessarily call that part of the open space if it's got, you know, structures on it. Playgrounds and things like that, that's something else.
And I just want to add that, uh, Ron, you're talking about, um, green space or whatever in the growth district. Um, not in the RZD and.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about what the definition is and it being, uh, if, if it's in the. RZD, I would expect it to be more firm than in a, in a commercial area. But once, once it's labeled or on a map or on a permit, um, I would. What set me off was it could be filled with solar panels. Uh, and still be called, uh, open space. That conversation, uh, it. I wouldn't see it as open space if it's filled with solar panels. But that's, you know, that's one man's opinion.
No, and this is a, uh, an, a complex issue that we'll want to spend more time on and, but I was trying to differentiate just because. The spaces you're talking about are within a built environment and are fractions of an acre each. Um, as opposed to what we were talking about with, say, fifty percent open space of parcels that are ten acres. And so it's in the residential district. To me, it's a, a equally important question. But if, uh, and I, and we need to get the terminology right, to me, the areas you're talking about are, are pocket parks and. That sort of thing, not what I would call open space, because to me, open space implies that there's some kind of view or. Space to walk in and that's not true, say, if you're undeveloped area. So, um, Matt, if you want to show us this, could you possibly go to view and say page width? So that the print is bigger for those of us since it's not, you know, it doesn't take our full screen. There should be a page width.
Is it maybe that one, one page?
No, it's page width, you want to, there you go, that one. That's it, thank you. Um, just a time check, um. Emily, where, um, do we have other agenda items we need to get to tonight?
Um. No, this is the big one, um, the other bylaw changes is the updates, cross references and corrections. So we can probably spend our last few minutes on this and then wrap up.
Okay, because we have nineteen more minutes till nine o'clock. And I just wanted to give a warning if that, if, I just want to make sure it's okay if we spend time on this. Okay. Go for it, uh, Ed, so.
Yeah, so I'm here, um, so, uh, the first, um, paragraph, basically what we have today. Um, talks about how there's no quantitative minimum requirement for open space, um. You know, the goal is to conserve as much as possible, et cetera. Um, and that, and the proposed language just says. All developments that involve more than, and this is a decision point, five acres, ten and a half acres. Um, in the zoning district must protect at least, and then I'm recommending fifty percent, um. Uh, fifty percent of their total area is open space. Um, and then basically this language is exactly as it's written in the ARZD. And then, you know, if you scroll down, basically, uh, the protected open space, um. Must protect, um, and lists all these areas, um, in, in reality, that's. I mean, that's, that's not always entirely, um. Practical or even possible, um, but. I, you know, and it, there's one caveat and that's, um. You know, it needs, it needs to protect, um, these different things consistent with the landowner's right to, you know, use their. Property or, or I think, I think that's the caveat. Um, but, but definitely the goal is to protect the, the important resources, um, and then. Yeah, so. And I think this, this language is already in the RZD as being, you know. Uh, th- this is not, this is the existing language here, um. Yeah, the protected open space must include all slopes of thirty percent or more. Um, protected open space should include all slopes of fifty to thirty percent. To the extent consistent with the lender's right to beneficial use of his or her property. Meaning that if there, you know, I don't know, that's kind of a bad example, but, um. Yeah, um, so that's, that's basically it. That's the, that's the proposed change. Um, I don't think I made any other changes to this. Chapter. Yeah.
Right, so this is, this is really about putting a number on it, um.
So. And although this is fairly minor, I think it's a major issue and one that CRG brought before us, so I, I do still want to. Um, discuss it next time, but I think we could. Probably quickly get the, uh, in a sense from people whether you like the five acres and the fifty percent. Um, can I poll people on that? Gee?
Yeah, I, um, I'm not sure, I definitely, I'm for the fifty percent of the total area. Uh, I was even considering fifty percent of the developable area, but that's pretty, that's pretty, uh, strict, I guess. Five acres, I'm not, uh, you know. How, how many units per acre, uh, in this zone?
Three per acre. Three, three dwelling units per acre and you can go up to five, um, with the provision of affordable housing. And keeping in mind that you take your total overall area, so say you have a hundred acres. But twenty acres are watershed protection buffers or wetland. You'd only be calculating that eighty percent. And then there's even further reduction for, for. Slopes of a certain size are, uh, Matt, what is it, one per ten acres?
Uh, in AR, it's one per ten. There is a density reduction, I think, for certain steep slopes here as well. Um, so it's, when we, when we look at the sort of, the maximum number of dwelling units you might get out of a parcel. Um, we take the constrained land that we know you absolutely cannot build on, which is. Wetlands, uh, wetland protection buffers and steep slopes, we subtract that acreage out and that's what the calculation is made on. Then, when we go to the design standards for the subdivision. Those constrained lands are part of, but not all of what you have to put into your open space and then there's this big list that you see. Um, in the bylaw that's there today that says here's other things that also need to be in your open space. But what the bylaw does not do today is have us make a calculation of just how many acres of your total you're putting into that open space. So that's the, that's the difference here and, um, on a. It would have more impact on a less constrained parcel because it would be forcing somebody to put more of their unconstrained land into protection. Than, than they would today.
Right, so, uh, so that leads to my point here. I don't know that five acres is a good number. I think I agree with Melinda on this, that ten point five acres or whatever. Is better because if you've got five acres, you can get three of them on there, you take fifty percent of that out. Oh, we're just saying that those three, three houses have to be on it, okay.
Correct.
I, I think the ten point five, I think when you're talking about five acres, your open space segments are going to be so small. That they're not really going to make a lot of sense, uh, so I would, I would go with the ten point five if those are our two choices. At this point, you know, I, I'd have to look at it more, but that's my current like thinking.
Well, yeah, so one thing to remember is on, on whatever parcels are smaller than this threshold acreage, um. Let's say it's ten point five and so a ten acre parcel is not subject to this fifty percent requirement. It's still subject to all this other stuff that you see in the black here that's already there, um, and. You know, I, I would say that there's a possibility of somebody, you know, offering up a relatively small piece of open space if they are. On a relatively unconstrained parcel, but when you go back to Melinda's maps and, you know, how many of the parcels out there are. Um, you know, smaller than ten point five in this district and subdividable, it's, it's not probably that many.
Okay, thanks.
It was interesting to me though that many of those parcels that are potential, um, but, uh, Brendan Woods or. Uh, those other developments, and if they wound up being developed, if their open space reservation. Abutted open space reserved by the other developments, it would be a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, Ron, just in terms of roughly, are you good with the five or ten acres and fifty percent?
Uh, I like the fifty percent, uh, I'm, I would stick, I would include five, but I can see. I, I'm not firm on five, ten, I could, I could concede.
Uh, Kate?
Sorry about that, um, I. I don't know, I think I need to think about it some more, um. I, I definitely think the ten point five, uh, you know, if we're going there, um, I'm a little con, I. I guess, you know, based on my other comment previously, the fact that all the, all the development showed already had fifty percent. Except for one which had forty-seven percent open space, so I'm not sure, I mean, I. Where this is getting us, um, I don't like the idea of, you know, restricting people's, uh, you know, property. I do like the idea of open space, but. I'm just not totally, uh, you know, the, the Citizens for Responsible Growth, I felt like they were getting at. The fact that we had so much building going on with so, so high dense building going on and. I don't know if putting this, like. I guess I want to talk more about if you're putting that same hundred units in just the smaller portion, which I know this has been brought up. Of the land, but you're still having the same number of people and are we actually solving their main concern with this? Which I know I said a lot of things there.
No, it's good. No, it's good. Megan?
Yeah, um. I think, for me, the issue is not so much, I mean, I like the 50%, like, it certainly makes sense to me. And it seems like it's kind of in line with what, you know, as Kate pointed out, it's kind of in line with what we've already done or what, you know, has happened one way or another. Um, I guess my interest would be more in, in the ways that, and I don't know that this gets at the, this issue. The ways that, uh, that the structures are distributed over space and, um, you know. My, my inclination would be to have houses clustered closer together, say in a 10 acre lot, uh, you know, parcel, sorry, um, have the houses kind of clustered together. And then the remaining section be open space, both for the, you know, for those homeowners, but also for the rest of the town in terms of views and wildlife quarters and all those kinds of things. You know, if you envision that, that corner between, that's bounded by Mountain View Road and Old Stage Road, by Windswept Horse Farm, um, you put that in your mental image for a moment. And imagine that there were going to be, I don't know. Um, I mean, I know this is the, the area that Matt was talking about. Retro, um, Front Porch Forum post. But, um, imagine that space and there were, I don't know, say eight houses going in. And if they were all equally spaced throughout that parcel, it would be a big presence. Whereas if they were clustered together kind of over in one area and the rest was still open, that's a very different kind of, um, both aesthetically and then in practical terms for things like stormwater runoff and wildlife and, um, you know, and even some of the, uh, some of the things Emily was talking about with like the food forest and all kinds of stuff like that. So I think, I, I don't know if my, what, what my concern is, is really addressed by this piece. Because I think what I prefer is, is that more kind of clustered, more tightly clustered development and then preserving the rest of the space. You know, possibly for public use, for paths and so forth also, or, or maybe just for the people who live there or, or something. But visually and practically, I think, um, that clustered scenario is, is far better than having eight houses each, you know, with an acre and a half. And all kind of lined up around some cul-de-sac. So, I don't know, Matt, if you have any thoughts on what I'm trying to talk about versus how this 50% five acre, 10 acre thing goes.
Uh, sure. Um, so I scrolled up on the share screen to the current language we have about contiguity of open space, which is as, as good as it gets right now, I think, Megan, in terms of what you're, you're getting at. I think when you require more open space, you by, by design, you're pushing, uh, houses into, you know, a smaller corner of the parcel, hopefully. I will say there's a parallel to this issue in the amendments that were made in the Ag Rural District a few years, years ago, where we changed the requirement that open space had to be platted in Ag Rural as a single contiguous parcel. And, you know, because other parcels have things like frontage requirements and connectivity requirements, it's not perfect, but it tends, tends to push for a little more of that clustering. And I, I can show you some examples where that's worked and, and some others where it, it kind of has been really challenging for us to, um, get somebody to plat that one big open space parcel. And to my staff, I'm thinking of the Howard subdivision, um, and they'll know what I'm talking about. But, um. There may be a need to expand on this a little bit in terms of, you know, I mean, when we were talking about it with Ag Rural, I was thinking about things like requiring that the open space be a certain regular kind of shape of some kind. Um, you know, old school subdivision law often had shape factor rules for parcel creation so that you couldn't create really bizarre spaghetti lot, um, parcels just to meet an acreage requirement. But really everything ends up, um, you know, laid out along a street. Vermont certainly had some of that when, when we used to have the 10 acre rule for septic systems. So we might draw some parallels to that in the way we look at open space. Um, I think you're right that open space is more valuable, more meaningful when it's kind of consolidated. Uh, and it's not spaghetti and it's not an octopus, but it's kind of, you know, this sort of big, regular chunk of open space that feels like it's all one piece. The other thing we saw in Ag Rural was, uh, and we've seen it in RCD, is people saying, well, here's my street and here's my building envelopes for my houses, uh, and everything else is open space. And what that looks like from the street is, is rural sprawl. Because you're spreading those, like in your example, those eight houses out all over the place. So we, we might, if, if there's interest from the group, we, we can, we can look a little bit about um, how that language might play out in the RZD.
I, I like the idea of adding the word clustering, uh, uh, somehow in there. We're getting close to the end of time and I wondered, Terry, do you want to comment on this at this point?
Uh, sure. So, um, I guess I'd just like to say this, with the, our group is very new. Group, um, basically just started organizing, uh, in late January, early February, and none of us really had any experience in being involved with the town and committees and things. So all this stuff is very new. And this stuff, I wasn't even thinking about, that there was a meeting tonight. So this is all stuff I've just been seeing tonight. So this is all new, all the maps and all that. So I think, you know, and like I said, our group hasn't been able to meet because of, you know, this whole virus thing. So we're just kind of learning as we go. I wasn't even thinking, you know, uh, as a group, we weren't even thinking about when we said 50% open space, that it wouldn't even be contiguous. I, we didn't think that somebody would cut up a piece of land, say 58, put little patches. You know, our idea was to preserve a 50% to encourage open space and views and things like that. And, you know, maybe to our naive, being naive is that it would reduce the amount of houses that would be put on that parcel, because I guess we were thinking there was so many houses per acre. And if 50% was taken out of that equation, it would be less, is reduce traffic, uh, you know, the whole list of things. So I guess I'm just going to need more time to review this, share it with our group, so we can, you know, understand this whole process a little bit more. And I'll try a little bit harder to try to figure out how we can meet as a group. You know, through this Zoom thing or Google or whatever. But, um, so that said, I just, we're just going to still continue to, to learn how this whole process works. And, and they said it might have not been the best amendment to propose, because it really doesn't cover everything, but it's just a start.
Thank you, Terry. Um, I would like to request that, um, Melinda's presentation plus the draft, be made available on the website and CRG people can look at it and we can review it in more detail. I hadn't weighed in myself yet, I just, I, based on the maps that you showed us, Melinda, I would say we should be talking all the way down to five acres, because there's not that much land left. And what's interesting is what, what we are sort of looking for in terms of views and quality of life that I think CRG is saying, is something that was done a lot in the Brennan Woods and Southridge Developments, probably as much as anywhere. But they had the luxury of so much acreage that they could, um, do it in a way to leave space that was open, that sometimes was in the middle, sometimes on the side, sometimes along Mountain View. And, um, I'm interested to think more about how it would be on a five or 10 acre parcel to do the same thing. And I second Megan's comment about having clustering be part of it. So, let's take it up next time after more review. I also would like to highlight something that I'm coming up against, which is the conflict between the energy plan where denser development, higher density in a smaller space reduces the carbon footprint of habitation. Where we are saying we want to increase, uh, renewable generation onsite. And both of those go against, um, having open space and, um, views. And so I'm trying to myself figure out how those two get resolved. And I would say one thing in the abstract and then I would look at example and say another thing. And the example for me that I keep bringing up, I realize, is the solar trackers behind the town hall that, um, not everybody likes that they went there. The conservation commission was not in favor of it when they went there, I don't believe. But I would say at this point, no, there have been no complaints about it. And to me, it doesn't destroy the open space feeling of that field, partly because they don't fill it, partly because they're not ground mounted in the normal sense. But I just want to say it's a complex issue and I don't want, I think we have to give it a lot of thought, because we are getting a push from the energy plan and carbon footprint direction on those two things, both of which conflict with other objectives.
Question about how all these meetings, and there's the select board, there's the, you know, conservation committee, there's all these different boards that are meeting through this Zoom. How, how is the public being, um, informed about these meetings happening? Is it just through that little, in the observer, there's a little, um, you know, notice in the, in the way back of the paper, um, and on the town website? You know, both of which not really too many people look at, like tonight, I wish I would have known this was happening and I would have put a message out to our group to say, hey, can, can folks who have the time watch this? But, um, I really didn't know. I was actually looking more at the select board meeting tonight to see what they were doing. And can we view these? Are they on the webs, on the town's website that we can go back, review?
Yes, so this, um, planning commission meeting was recorded. Uh, it's probably going to be too large of a file for me to upload to the website, but I am going to pass it on to Channel 17. And they will be posting, um, meetings that I record on their website. So usually they only come, we only have a subscription package for them to record three meetings if they come in person. Now, because I'm able to record this, I just pass it on to them, they can put it on the website. We are required to put legal notices in the newspaper for, um, the development review board when there's a formal public hearing or a formal public hearing, like next week, the energy plan that got noticed in the paper. But, but planning commissions have been standing meetings on First and Third Tuesdays for a long time. There is a new subscription feature on the website where you can subscribe to DRB newsletter and a, I believe a select board one. That's kind of a new thing that the town manager's still working on. Um, and I'm touching, touching base with them so people could subscribe and get an email. Yeah, I'm trying to be really diligent about putting things up on the website and making the agendas embedded in the page for easy accessibility. Terry, I'm also willing to meet with you one-on-one and walk you through some of the Zoom features. Uh, you do have up to 40 minutes for a meeting on a free account, if that's something that CRG would be interested in.
Yeah, probably. So that would be helpful. I've been on these meetings with the different boards and things, uh, but they've always sent a link and I just click on the link. So that's, I haven't had to set up one myself.
Yeah, I can, I can walk you through that for sure. And, um, I think going forward, we're in this brave new world with using Zoom. And I don't see there's a way to go back, even when we do resume in-person meetings. So I'm talking with Eric in the manager's office about getting some additional technology um, in our meeting rooms where they can be recorded and people can participate by, uh, calling in or joining in on Zoom. Getting to a meeting hall at seven o'clock can be prohibitive for people, especially if you don't have a car, don't want to drive at night, have small children, um, just got out of work, that kind of thing. So I think moving forward, we can use Zoom to make these meetings more publicly accessible.
Okay, I think people just need to know about them and I don't know, you know, just the website and the, the observer. You know, I, unless you're looking, unless you're plugged into that. You know, I don't know, Front Porch Forum is something, are you still doing the planners' corner?
Yep, we do the monthly planners' corner. Um, we've broken that out now into one posting, that's the content article, and another posting that's just the minutes and agendas. Um, I'm, I'm still touching base with Eric and Rick about that subscription newsletter, because it would be great if there would be, um, an automated email that went out once or twice a month, that's like, hey, here's the link to this month's planning commission or DRB agendas, that sort of thing. To get that information out there.
Because, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you so much, Melinda, all that work, getting that information ready for us. And thank you, Emily, for, um, not only doing this, but thinking proactively. I think you're right, people should be able to join on the phone and on Zoom to any meeting in the future. That'd be great. And thank you, planning commissioners, for all your attention tonight. We'll look forward to reading in more detail on these last two. Oh, and on the, on the, um, collected updates, cross reference, we'll do that next time, too.
Yeah, a lot of that's, um, boring stuff. And then some of it are, are some substantive, substantive changes, but they're fairly minor in their nature, um, and impact. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion with adjourn.
Okay, Ron moved.
Megan seconded, nice.
Okay. I'm not even asked for a vote, we are adjourned because we're eight minutes over.
All right, good night, everybody.
Night. Bye, be well.
Thanks, bye.
Bye.